Problem solved.
I'd like to call the Township North Huntington Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call made is your fault.
Commissioner Hempel.
Here.
Commissioner Atwood.
Here.
Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Zona.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner McHugh.
Here.
President Haggas.
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening prayer by Pastor Cole from Calvary Church?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for tonight. God, we thank you just for the ability and the privilege to gather in a public forum. God, I pray that your Spirit is present tonight. God, that your peace is in this room and that conversations will happen with open ears and with softened hearts. God, I pray for wisdom on both parties, the commissioners in front of me, but also the people behind me. God, I pray that the best interest of the people in this community is at the forefront and present. And God, I thank you just for the ability to have conversations within this community. And God, I pray for the first responders that are keeping this community safe. God, I pray that you just protect them and bring them home safe tonight. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. If any resident would like to speak tonight, could you please sign the book of the podium? Thank you. Our first resident is John. You can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
John Betis, eleven nine fifty-seven McKee Road, North Huntington. I wanted to bring up two points, a couple of questions I had for the commissioners. Unfortunately, a gentleman I really wanted to ask, which is my commissioner, is not here tonight, but we'll work around that. First and foremost, for people that were not here last year or commissioners last year, I offered to pay in full freight for the two stop signs that I want. The labor to install, the materials to install, and even lunch for the crew that are going to do the work from our fine road crew people that want to do it. We had a very robust conversation last week about the budget. And as I'll reiterate, I'm totally willing to pay full freight for that. So there's no incumbent cost to the township in general. I feel like we've already spent enough money down there. My opinion aside, that's the one thing I wanted to mention, just to remind everybody of my request. The secondary point or statement I want to make is about the budget. And the tax increases or proposed options for the increases. I'm not sure if this was something that has to happen during these tough economic times for people that are struggling. Inflation being where it's at, et cetera. Unfortunately, last year, you know, the sports complex that was shot down by some members and people that are not here tonight. I wonder how those residents are going to feel about their taxes going up in lieu of instead of having to bring in more income to the township. I find this a little bit hard to understand and swallow. Again, a lot of my comments were unfortunate for Commissioner Gray. The gentleman has never come and talked to me about my issue, my stop sign at my corner. Mr. Atwood, who's an adjacent commissioner, was there. I hate talking about somebody that's not present. Hopefully, hopefully he's okay. But these are facts that I'm willing to talk about anytime, and I give my address to the public, so anybody can come knock on my door and discuss it. The robust conversation you guys had about the budget, the proposed millages, the taxes, the fees, the this, the that, the volleying back and forth. Seemed a little bit rushed, seemed a little bit in haste. I think my recommendation is to have a little bit of pause and stop and think about it and, you know, maybe reassess it. Wait to see how the economy turns going into next year. I know there's a lot of projects we want to get done, but changing, adjusting, and increasing fees to residents doesn't seem very timely in the situation that we're at right now. So I sat there and listened to all your opinions and felt that I wanted to, you know, give you my little two cents. Aside from my topic that had been coming up here for, you know, eighteen months about. So in general. I look forward to hearing your responses to my questions. Thank you.
Our next resident is Nick. If you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Nick. I live in North Huntington. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I stand here once again, which is already a miracle considering how many times people have tried to intimidate, silence, and restructure me out of this conversation. To highlight the most egregious failures your leadership has allowed to fester in this township. Let's start with the obvious. My thirteen-month-old son and his mother were nearly killed on July seventh, two thousand twenty-four, when an individual crossed a clearly marked double-yellow line at nearly ninety miles an hour in a residential thirty-five. Two eyewitnesses at the scene confirmed exactly what happened. The elements of an aggravated assault by vehicle were plain as day, and yet in your township, no sobriety test, no proper crash investigation protocol, no charges until I pressed and pressed and called and called and was threatened. Finally, then, on November fourteenth, because you all knew I was coming to the November fourteenth meeting, I got a phone call from Dan Lor an hour before the meeting telling me the charges had been filed, as though that was going to rectify the malicious attacks prior to those charges of finally being filed. And yet, in your township, just a quick handshake and you're free to go. And a month's-long cover-up that still goes on today that stinks worse than spoiled milk on a July heatwave. But let's not stop there because your police department and certain officials didn't just mishandle the crash. They retaliated against me for simply demanding justice for my family and safety for every other family in this township. You opened investigations only after I filed legitimate complaints. You filed charges only after I exposed misconduct. Your conduct of warrantless detentions, fingerprinting without lawful authorization, seized property without due process, and then had the audacity to pretend that all of this was standard procedure. In what country is that standard procedure? Not America. If that's standard, then God help the rest of this township. And while your residents filled your inboxes, not just your residents, but your employees filled your inboxes with comments, you know, comments at the meetings, in community forums, concerns, evidence and questions, you sit up here and pretend like everything is fine. As if the cries of the people were background noise for your next executive session. Well, I'm here to tell you, we are not background noise. We are the people you swore an oath to serve. And yes, I will bring scripture into this. It's a shame that the gentleman who said the prayer for us just left the room because I think that he would enjoy the next part of what I have to say. In Ephesians one eleven, it commands us, "Have nothing to do with the fruitless deeds of darkness, but rather expose them." I am exposing them. Isaiah ten, one through two warns leaders, "Woe to those who make unjust laws, who deny justice to the oppressed." You've denied justice, and the people see it. Proverbs thirty-one eight nine reminds us, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves. Defend the rights of the poor and the needy." My son's mother has a traumatic brain injury, and he's thirteen months old, you fucking assholes. Don't even try. Pause my time. Listen, you don't like it, get the fuck out. Get out then, you don't like it. Speak up for those. And since we are being honest, let me add this. If the good Lord had warned me to stay, wanted me to stay quiet, he wouldn't have given me a camera, a backbone, and a forty-nine-inch monitor to organize all the evidence. You all know exactly what took place. You just chose to pretend you didn't. But even the Bible says that doesn't last forever. Luke twelve two says, "There is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed, or hidden that will not be made known." And if you doubt it, ask your social media metrics. The truth is spreading faster than your PR teams can handle the uptick. You've cut off comments to the police Facebook page and the township Facebook page. Which, for the record, once you make it a limited public forum by allowing public comment, you can't then turn it into a bulletin board, "Talk to your lawyer about it." But before I conclude, you need to hear this. I did not ask for this. I did not aspire to become this. I simply got up every day, put on the armor of God, and marched forward. And like the prophet Isaiah wrote in Isaiah six eight, then I heard the voice of the Lord saying, "Who shall I send and who will go for us?" And I said, "Here I am. Send me, and I'll do this alone if I have to, all the way to the finish line." Ron, you told me to bring it on. I mean, I don't know if you're regretting that now, but as I've told you in the past, it's been brought. And just so you're also aware, we do know that Chief, I'll wrap it up, Zach. Just give me like twenty seconds? Okay. Twenty seconds, boss. Chief Rizzo is now officially done since Monday, and he is now on vacation until January. Yet he hasn't answered for the stolen vehicles, the drive-by shootings, the meth amphetamines. He hasn't answered. Not one question has been brought to him over the last year. He hasn't even told us the answer to Eric Gass's question, "What constitutes an abandoned car?" Yet he's on vacation as our township goes through this horrible chapter. I think that's appalling and ridiculous. He should have to come to answer.
Thank you. Our last resident is Kevin. Our last resident is Kevin. You want to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name's Kevin Albert. I live at twenty-two seventy-one Timothy Road with my wife Pamela. My home is located in the sixth ward, which is right off of Nike Site Road and across from Oak Hall of Park. The reason I'm attending tonight's meeting is I want to formally object to the streetlight tax assessment that's been applied to my property. We moved to our new home in August of two thousand and eighteen. We lived in Penn Trafford for thirty-six years, although I was born and raised in Irwin. RWS developed nine home sites on our street. Ours was the second home that was completed out of the nine. Once all the homes were built, streetlights were installed in two thousand and twenty. I was actually unaware that I was even getting streetlights, but I was pleased because it's a very dark and a very rural street. What else surprised me is that there was only four lights installed, and there are nine homes on our street. Beginning with the first light, which is located between the first and the second home, there's one light located between all the homes except for ours. Our house is the ninth and the last house at the bottom of Timothy Drive, which is connecting to Durs Road, if you're familiar with that. Compared to the other homes, they benefit because there's only one half of their lot in size to the proximity of a streetlight. In two thousand and twenty-one, we received our first annual streetlight assessment. It was on our county and municipal tax bill. And my property was assessed three hundred and one dollars and eleven cents, which is more than double what my neighbors pay. I actually confirmed with my next-door neighbor that she pays a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. On April first of two thousand and twenty-one, I contacted Ryan Fonzie, who at the time was the Director of Planning and Zoning. And he explained to me that the North Huntington Township ordinance assesses streetlights. And because of being a corner lot and a larger lot, I was paying more than my neighbors. I read the ordinance, and it does state that the costs and expenses of the lights are assessed on all properties benefiting from such lighting. But it also says that the commissioners may provide for an equitable reduction from the frontage of lots at intersections, peculiar-shaped lots, or where the assessment would be inequitable. At that time, I accepted Ryan's explanation. But after living there in the dark for seven years, I think that it's foolish of me to just stand by and do nothing about it. When I think about it, in April of this year, I paid for the fifth year of my assessment that amount. So that means that I've paid fifteen hundred dollars cumulatively for streetlights that I don't even have. Well, that said, I'm respectfully asking for a review to look at my assessment because I'm not really benefiting from the streetlights that we have. And I brought with me a letter. I addressed it to Mr. Falk, who's the township manager. And along with it, I've attached RWS's original lot map plan. And it highlights where the nine lots are located and where the streetlights are in relationship to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Is there any other resident that would like to speak tonight that didn't get a chance to sign the book of the podium? Not seeing any response to citizen's input. We had three residents speak tonight. Mr. Betis spoke about a stop sign on the street down by the park. Like I said last week, I believe we can work with PennDOT and try to get a solution for you as far as. for you as far as you volunteering me. And I'm just speaking for myself. Your own money to pay for the stop sign, that wouldn't be necessary. It's not a practice I believe the township wants to get into, to have residents pay for things. But we'll have to work with PennDOT, because there is some state statutes and regulations that we can't just unfortunately, as you well know from hearing us talk before, we can't go up and just put stop signs. So if, I believe, like I said, I don't want to speak for everyone on the board, but I think if PennDOT would give us a go-ahead, I don't think anyone on the board would have a problem putting a stop sign there, but we just don't want to put that without their permission.
And if I can add on to that, Mr. Batus, I told you last week I talked to Kim Ward's office. I talked to Dottie again today. She wasn't in the office. She's going to be in the office tomorrow. She remembers conversations with you. She had conversations with PennDOT. She's going to look up all her paperwork that she had and her notes, and I'm going to talk to her tomorrow about exactly what she did through PennDOT and get all the details of all that. I'll pass it along to Manager Falk, and we'll go from there. We'll try to get some solution down there for you, at least something that stops that
Any other response to Mr. Batus? All right. And our next resident was Nick. Does the board have any response to him? And then our last resident was Kevin, come up and spoke about a streetlight tax. Manager Falk or Director Fonzie, I guess he explained it pretty well, and obviously, Assistant Manager Fonzie, you already spoke with him. The one part, I guess I had a question for, maybe just from my own knowledge, the placement of the streetlights, is that up to the developer where the streetlights are placed?
Yeah, they tend to set them on property corners. And it's stated in our ordinance that there's supposed to be a maximum spacing of two-hundred feet, although over time, the properties have gotten bigger. Like Mr. Albert was explaining, like the neighbors along Timothy, the average frontage is around one-hundred forty feet. So if they put it at every other corner, the ordinance also states that everybody within two-hundred fifty feet of a streetlight can be assessed for the tax. And so that's his situation. He's about one-hundred thirty-eight feet from the nearest streetlight, but he's still included in that tax assessment per the subdivision land development ordinance. But as he stated, he does have a lot of frontage. He has six-hundred twenty-seven feet of frontage. But with our assessments, that's a corner lot, so that's cut in half to kind of alleviate the fee.
Okay. And also, if I might add, you know, the ordinance does state the township commissioners may provide for inequable reduction from the frontage of lots at intersections where the peculiar, peculiar or pointed-shaped lots for full frontage would not be inequitable. So, you know, I can understand, you know, he's on a corner, has a corner lot and paying that fee. If, almost as a case-by-case basis, if a resident brings it to the board, the staff, we could look at it, review it, and come up with some kind of solution for the board. Maybe use the average of what all the neighbors are paying on that, and maybe, you know, charge him that average. If the board's interested in doing that, we can do that and provide something next month.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, if you guys can look into it and maybe research it and come back to us next month.
We could obviously reach out to Mr. Albert, too, and we'll let you know where we stand with everything.
If I remember correctly, it's been a while since I've been that far down Timothy, but I think that corner, like there's not even anything there. Like the yard stops, and then it's like pretty much undeveloped the whole way around the corner. So it seems to me that only half of that's even developed. You know, maybe there, you know, we can look at that. I don't know if that gives it any other weight at that point, but yeah, there's definitely not, the yard ends, and then there's nothing the whole way down around the bend, if I remember correctly.
Thank you. Any other responses, citizen's input? Not approval meetings minutes for the regular meeting, 9:17:25. There was a correction to that one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. For the special meeting, 10:09:25.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. For the regular meeting, 10:15:25.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I would have, I would just have a correction to be made, an amendment on air under call to order for that meeting. It was called to order by myself. That was a meeting that I ran. If we can just have that changed, please.
So we have a motion and a second, and as long as you guys are okay with that change, we'll have that done to the motion. Any other further discussion or amendments to that meetings minutes? All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Payment of bills?
I make the motion that we pay voucher number 45937 through voucher number 46200.
Second.
Discussion.
I will be abstaining as my place of employment was said.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then one abstention. Motion passes five to one with one abstention. Public Works report, Director Holinsky.
Nothing to add to my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Public Works tonight?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I know, I reached out to you and to Manager Falk maybe a month or two ago. Coming down Bethel Road, going toward Lincoln Way, there's an area, I think it was from the water company, I think. Do you know where I mean? And that is, I got some more calls on that this week, and it kind of bottoms out. And if you're coming down that hill and you hit that, even at the speed limit, you do kind of, it jars your car. I don't know what we can do about that. It looks like, I mean, the road is angled there, and it looks like the patch that they put in has sunken down, and it is kind of, it is a little dangerous there.
No, it is bad. We talk to them a couple times a week. We'll certainly reach out and ask again. Hopefully, they'll do something with that before winter time.
Okay.
They're still like asphalt, so we'll encourage them to do something.
I know I reached out to you before. I just wanted to do it again, because I'm still getting complaints from that. I know people are coming over that hill and down, and it's a pretty steep hill there, and they pick up a little bit of speed and hit that.
I drive that way every day. We do have it marked out for them to fix. Our guys marked it. Sort of just a waiting game with them now. We'll certainly reach out again tomorrow and see if we can expedite the process.
Anything else on park, excuse me, Public Works? Thank you, Director. Park Recreations Report, Coordinator Kincaid.
I have nothing additional to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on parks and rec? Thank you. Police Report, Lucanet McCarty.
Thanks, I just have a few things. I'd like to ask the motoring public to be patient and extra cautious during the upcoming holiday season. We experience a higher volume of traffic during this time of year, as well as weather events make travel more challenging. So please, just be patient and extra cautious. Also, we have an event that we have every year, Shop with a Cop. It's organized by State Trooper Lamonti. It's held on December 17th up at our Walmart. A group of local law enforcement officers with multiple agencies will be on hand to help the kids pick out a few items for the holidays. It's a great event. If you know of any families or any children that might benefit from this, you can reach out to Greensburg State Troop and Steve Lamonti. And one more thing, I'd love to recognize Sergeant Drystat, Patrolman Urias, and Corporal Popovich for their extreme heroic action responding to a house fire on November 8th. The reported smoke pouring from the back of a house came in around 10:00 AM. And upon arrival, three officers were made aware of two dogs trapped inside the burning house. Without hesitation and no regard for their own safety, all three officers quickly entered the building. The wall of smoke was thick. They needed to crawl on their stomachs to survive. They were without breathing apparatus, but they were determined to save the two dogs. Sergeant Drystat, unable to see and barely enough oxygen to breathe, reached the source of the flames. He quickly found out that one extinguisher was not enough. When Sergeant Drystat called for a second fire extinguisher, Corporal Popovich was within armed reach and handed him the second additional extinguisher. While Sergeant Drystat and Corporal Popovich were battling the flames, Patrolman Urias searched for the dogs. As Patrolman Urias entered the home, he was faced with a fateful decision to turn left or turn right. Patrolman Urias turned left and found the first dog barely moving, lying on the floor. He pulled him to safety. Patrolman Urias went back into the smoke. Not only by chance, Patrolman Urias found the second dog, also lying on the floor. Patrolman Urias carried the limp and lifeless dog outside and aided in administering oxygen, saving the dog's life. Both dogs spent days in the animal hospital and are now back with their family. The actions of these officers brought great credit upon themselves and North Huntington Police Department. Extremely proud of all three of them. Thank you.
Please pass along our thank yous for those guys for a job well done.
Yep. Will do.
Anything else for the police department report tonight?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Any questions? Emergency Management Report, Coordinator Mahinsky? All right. Any questions for Emergency Management? All right. Community Development Reports, any questions on the fire officials report tonight? And sorry, Cody, I skipped you there. Engineering Report, anything to add to your report tonight, Cody?
No problem. I don't have anything to add.
Any questions for the engineers tonight? Community Subdivision Land Development, Assistant Manager Fonzie?
Yeah, there are five items set for your approval tonight. The first is subdivision 22 of 2025, the St. Nikolai Drive subdivision, requesting board action to approve the subdivision located at the end of St. Nikolai Drive, conditioned upon sewage planning approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Second item is subdivision 23 of 2025, the Friedhof-Dick Plan, requesting board action to approve this boundary line revision located on Armstrong Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Third, we have subdivision 24 of 2025, the Nicholas-Costa Lot Line Revision, requesting board action to approve this boundary line revision on Kifer Lane.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Fourth, we have Site Plan 21 of 2025, the Guardian Storage Site Plan, requesting board action to approve this major land development on Rhonda Court, including all the conditions listed in the memo.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
And last, we have Site Plan 22 of 2025, the Somerset Trust Site Plan, requesting board action to approve this land development located at the top of Jacktown Hill between 30 and Center Highway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Assistant Manager Fonzie. Solicitor's report, Solicitor Dice.
No report received.
All right. Thank you, Solicitor Dice. Township Manager Report, Manager Falk.
Action to approve the October check register.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I will be abstaining as a check was sent to my place of appointment.
Any other discussion? All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then one abstention. Motion passes five to zero with one abstention.
You have a copy of the October budget report. Are there any questions? Seeing none, moving on. Action to accept letters of interest for vacant positions on the Planning Commission and the Western Westmoreland Municipal Authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Action to accept the resignation of Josh Andrikovich, Director of Community Development.
I regretfully motion to accept.
Regretfully, second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Action to advertise for the position of Community Development Director.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to hire Justin Casera for the position of telecommunications officer, contingent upon the successful completion of a pre-employment drug screen and background check.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to hire Kelly Lender for the position of truck driver labor in the Public Works Department, contingent upon the successful completion of a pre-employment drug screen and background check.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Congratulations, gentlemen, and welcome to the team. Action to approve Resolution Number 142, authorizing the Township Manager and Board President to sign the winter maintenance agreement with PennDOT.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to approve Resolution Number 143, designating the Township Manager and Board President to execute all documents and agreements with the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the Indian Lake Park Improvement Project Grant in the amount of $1 million.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Action to approve Resolution Number 144, designating the Township Manager and Board President to execute all documents and agreements with the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the Circleville Volunteer Fire Department Parking Lot Resurfacing Project Grant in the amount of $1 million.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to advertise Ordinance Number 2314, establishing procedures for leasing of township-owned land.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Roll call vote, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Gray? Commissioner Ozona?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevan?
Yes.
Commissioner McHugh?
Yes.
President Haggas?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
Action to advertise Ordinance Number 2315, affixing the various tax rates for the year 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Manager Falk, just if you can clarify for maybe some people that weren't here last week, this will be a proposed increase of a percent and a half to the general, and then two percent to the capital reserve?
That is correct. A one-and-a-half mil tax increase for the general fund, that is to cover the commodities, health insurance, pension payments. The two-mil tax increase for the capital reserve fund, that is going to be funding for the projects for the roads and stormwater projects.
And just based on some of the comments, too, if we did not raise the millage, what would the budget look like passing? We would not have a balanced budget, and we would have to pull how much out of our reserve?
We would have to get pretty creative, meaning that essentially, there would be no projects. The liquid fuels, the $1 million that we receive annually from liquid fuels that we The liquid fuels, the $1 million that we receive annually from liquid fuels that we utilize for the road paving projects, we would have to use that for the purchase of salt, which is upwards of $300,000 or $400,000 annually. So that's a couple of miles of road, less roads to be paved. We would be draining our reserves fund, our reserve account, which is right now holding at, at 4.6 million. We have to retain 25% of that according to our policy and the general accounting practices of local government. We, we would essentially draining all our money and there would be no projects. This is going to stabilize the fund and stabilize that savings so we can use that for projects and, and invest more in the roads and the stormwater projects and the equipment.
And when you say we have to hold that at 25, you mean 25% of our overall operating budget, correct?
Correct.
And what, what is that? Well, we're at, you said four what? Four seven?
About four seven. We'd have to, I believe off the top of my head, we'd have to, we can spend down to as much as, I think, 3.6 or 3.7 million. So we could spend, you know, a million dollars, but that'll go really quick. It'd be financially unstable for the next few years.
So basically, to, to continue business as we've been doing these past several years, we have really no choice at this point.
Yes, this, this time is going to come. It was coming before COVID. As you recall in the previous slide presentations, we were in the downward, downward spiral, ending the year with deficits. The COVID money, the ARPA money helped out. It put a Band-Aid on, on the blood wound and bleeding wound and now it needs to be fixed.
And I think without, without the ARPA money, which I believe, COVID was 2020 and I believe that money started coming in in 2021, maybe?
I believe so, yes.
So those years, '21, '22, we, we were able to sneak by with that ARPA money. And if it wasn't for that ARPA money, we would have, we would have been in financial distress at that time.
We would have been, we would have been requesting tax increases in previous years.
Yeah, I just wanted to just make sure everybody, everybody knew that. And, and also, and just with, with some of what you said too, Mr. Badis, it seemed like we were going too quick. I mean, when did we, we do start on a budget pretty early and when did we start in October?
We started October this year.
So we have been discussing it in September. So we started discussing the stormwater fee in this budget back in September, which we do every year and we start pretty early to discuss it, so. I, I mean, I feel that the board and, and the manager did our due diligence and looked at every option that we could possibly look at. I mean, that's why, it's not what I want to do, but I think at this point that I think we have no other option.
And if I might add that this budget and the proposed taxes, we will eliminate the per capita tax with it, so you'll, you won't get that per capita tax from North Huntington Township anymore. You'll still receive, receive that, per capita tax from the school district. And also, the, the average increase for the resident is about $74. So your taxes will, your average cost of your taxes will go up by $74.
And then just one question. Are we still going to attempt to get the delinquent per capita?
That will continue, yes.
Because I would assume we still have their link, delinquent per capita. Even if we do away with the per capita, we're still gonna have some delinquent.
Yes, we still have to collect the, Keystone Collections will still collect the delinquent per capita up until the end of 2024. So anything that's not, or at the end of 2025, so anything that has not been paid up to 2025, they still have the right to go after that.
Okay.
And Manager Falk, just for, I guess, maybe public knowledge too, the last time the Board of Commissioners raised taxes was before 2028. And we actually lowered them in 2011, so it's been many years. Not saying that anyone on the board doesn't want to raise taxes, but since the board ever actually made any adjustments to taxes, the last adjustment the board actually has made was a decrease in taxes and that was in 2012.
And I know several of us on the board, I'll speak for myself. I know I said it. Sometimes it's not always the prudent thing to wait and wait and wait and wait. I mean, I mean, we want to go as long as we can without raising taxes, but then sometimes it puts you in this position where you have no choice. Then our choice is to raise it a small amount for a year or two or do we, do we raise it a little bit where it's gonna, that raise is gonna last for 10 years, so. I feel that's what we're doing is that the millage increase will hopefully last us for 10 years when I'm gone and off this board, so. That's my hope.
That, I think Manager Falk and as well as the department directors are gonna get a better plan of a five-year outlook for equipment. I don't think we want to end up like, not to throw shade at the city of Pittsburgh, but they're dealing with stuff you hear on the news with a lot of their equipment all going to age and being, need to be replaced at the same time. And as Commissioner Ozona said, if that comes to the case, though, we're dealing with a difficult decision of how to replace all that equipment at the same time. So I think with Manager Falk and the department directors are gonna get a better grasp on the five-year outlook for replacement of some of the larger pieces of equipment for all the departments as well with the budget changes.
I met with Manager Falk. I had asked him to sit down with me. We could go over some of these numbers a little bit. And he brought in the department directors and we sat down and they fielded all of my supposedly, or seemingly dumb questions. I wouldn't supposedly, but seemingly dumb questions. And I mean, I asked about all kinds of stuff and they were all on the ball. They, they, they're doing a great job. They all have the best intention for the community. They, they take pride in the fact that they, they do a lot with their budgets. And, you know, I, I really feel like we went through every scenario I had in my head and, you know, we, we've come, I've come to this conclusion that this is probably the best, the best thing for the community at this point, whether or not we want to do it or not. I mean, raising my own taxes, so I know I'm paying for it too.
Any other board discussion? I believe I had a motion.
Yes.
Yep, sorry.
I would just like to say that I'm going to vote yes on this because I think everybody who, who owns a home realizes that to maintain that home, it costs more every year. It goes the same for a government agency. It costs more to provide for what we've been providing for than it did last year. And if we keep kicking the can down the road, we're gonna have a, a much higher tax increase later. So I just see this as a, a maintenance agreement, sort of, to maintain what we have. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bevan. Any other board discussion? If not, I have a motion and a second. All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Action to advertise the 2026 budget for public inspection.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to advertise ordinance number 2316, adopting the 2026 budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Action to advertise the bids for the demolition of 7716, State Route 30 and 3031 Paintertown Road structures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to approve pay application number one and final to Russell Standard in the amount of $434,239.83 for the 2025 Betinmas Fiber Reinforced Seal Coat Program Contract Number 2025-02.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to approve pay app number one to Tresco Paving Corp. in the amount of $927,640.85 for the 2025 Million and Resurfacing Program Contract Number 2025-01.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Action to approve pay application number one from Piccolo Mini Contractors in the amount of $64,127.34 for the 2025 Stormwater Pond Improvement Project Contract Number 2025-05.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Do you know offhand which pond that was?
Mr. Grabiak.
They, they're portions of four different ponds in that pay application.
I remember this one then. I just, I couldn't remember which one this one specifically was. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved, six to zero.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Manager Falk. Any further board comments? No, I just need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All those unfair by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Meeting adjourned at 7:45. Executive session to follow. Talk about personnel matters.